Morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm going to start with a short prayer from Counselor Crick.
Lord, we thank you today that we can come here. Thank you for the great place, the MD of Bonneville we have to live in. And pray for your wisdom today in this meeting and in all of our future meetings. And also, Lord, we want to pray for the Bamber family, and thank you for the life of Fred. And pray your comfort on the rest of the family that's still here. And pray this all in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor Crick. I guess I just have... A little bit of sad news this morning. As I was coming into town this morning, I was informed that a good friend of mine, Counselor Fred Bamber, passed away last night. Spent eight years with the man serving here. Seven years. And loved him very much. I love this family. He did great for the MD of Bonneville. Funnier note, I think Mike gave him the nickname when he first came in, Fred the Ex-Fed. Because he's always in federal. He's always a game warden. So it was kind of a thing that caught. And I guess from the MD and myself and council, we want to send out condolences to Connie and your family. And you're in our thoughts and prayers in upcoming weeks. So at this time, I think we're gonna... It's right to... We're gonna do a minute of silence for him. So please join me in a minute of silence for Mr. Fred Bamber. Thank you. Okay, we have an agenda before us. Is there any additions to the agenda?
None from administration.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to pass the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Crick. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. No vote. Carrie, thank you. Looking for the adoption of the minutes. Organized meeting of October 26th. Thank you, Counselor Swagard. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Looking for a motion for the October 26th meeting? Thank you, Counselor Slupczek. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Also, looking for an November 15th Committee of the Whole meeting? Counselor Crick, thank you. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I got it.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry.
No problem.
I just was looking through the names of the staff that were present. And the ladies that were doing up the minutes and everything, I didn't see their names in there. And wondered if that... They're obviously very important. We couldn't have our meetings without you ladies, so...
All members of staff that were here for the November 15th meeting are on that list.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Going to seven for 7.1, development application?
Good morning.
Morning.
This is development permit application 2022-D-228. The applicant is Paul Bourgeot. And the applicant is applying for a guest ranch use with eight cabins. The properties are located on Township Road 613 at the end of Range Road 412A, five miles south of the hamlet of Cherry Grove. Adjacent properties are three residential parcels, two quarter sections with residences, owned and leased quarter sections and remnants. The applicant attended the MD office with the plan to create eco cabins for rent to attract tourists to partake in bird watching, bison watching, hiking, and boating on the Beaver River. Administration assisted the applicant in navigating the province's new home warranty requirements for this type of development and reviewed the land use by law to determine that this project can be classified as a guest ranch use. Administration referred the project to inspections group for a review of the National Building Codes and was provided a review that no commercial construction requirements are mandatory for this type of development. The applicant has up to eight cabins planned for this development. The first cabin, which is Style 1, is 624 square feet. And it is the only cabin Style 1 planned. Cabins 2 to 8 will be cabin Style Number 2, which is 192 square feet. Cabins 1 through 3 will be on northeast 1661-1 west of the 4th Meridian. Cabins 4 through 6 will be on northwest 1661-1 west of the 4th. And cabins 7 and 8 will be on northeast 1561-1 west of the 4th Meridian. Construction of the cabins will be in order of 1 to 8, west to east, and will be dependent... Built dependent on the demand. As per Section 34.2 of the land use by law for bed and breakfast and guest ranch, the maximum number of commercial accommodation units shall be six in an agricultural district. The Development Authority may allow two additional units at their discretion. Referrals were sent out to the MD Public Safety, Regional Health Authority, and the Fire Authority for comment, and none were received. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on December... Sorry, November 1st. And we received two phone calls of concern. One neighbor was concerned about trespassing and shooting on their lands. Another landowner was concerned about the loss of privacy and seclusion and the potential for trespassing and harassment of their livestock. Our recommendation for development application 2022-D-228 is approve the request for a guest ranch use with six units as a discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 34 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: Development to be located as per the minimum setbacks for agricultural district, front yard 125 feet from the center line, side and rear yard 20 feet. An approved building permit is required as per the Safety Codes Act. Applicable gas, electrical, plumbing, sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained on site in a bin or covered in closed trailer as per Section 3 of the Nuisance Bylaw. As per Section 34 of the Land Use Bylaw, bed and breakfast and guest ranch, the operator of the bed and breakfast or guest ranch establishment must be a permanent resident of the single detached dwelling. And the bed and breakfast or guest ranch must be secondary to the residential or agricultural use. Maximum number of commercial accommodation units shall be six. New accommodation unit shall include a kitchen. All bed and breakfast or guest ranch establishments must meet the public health regulations and be kept in a manner satisfactory to the health authority. Only one bed and breakfast or guest ranch establishment shall be allowed per lot. If kitchens are installed, new development permits for the change of use to dwellings are required and new home warranty will be required on each cabin.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
I just have a question in regards to... Excuse me. So in regards to the hunting concerns, could you kind of cover that as... Since we're on camera and all that, so people are, I guess, are clear about that?
The hunting regulations are actually provincial, so we do not have any authority in that. But, you know, people are not supposed to trespass and people are not supposed to go on properties they don't have permission for.
So, and these cabins aren't for hunting purposes, correct?
No, he does not have any plans to operate an outfitter business.
Right.
Yes, Counselor Swagard?
Yeah, I didn't have any issues with that, other than the comment about hunting. I thought, it's not a hunting camp, so it shouldn't be an issue. So it looks like kind of a good, you know, tourism kind of thing, I think. And it's a nice location on... By the river there, so I don't see why it wouldn't be good to have.
Any other comments or motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Scarsen?
Thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves development permit application number 2022-D-228, a guest ranch with six cabins within northeast 1661-1 west of the 4th M, northwest 1561-1 west of the 4th M, and northeast 1561-1 west of the 4th M as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 34 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Paul Bouget, as per the recommendation presented. Any other discussion on this motion? Yes?
Would council consider the additional two cabins to make it eight accommodation units?
I guess my comment would be, I would think yes, but he's made comments in there that he's going to build them as required, right? So maybe, you know, maybe five, six, seven, eight years before he asks for the other two. So I'm not sure. Do I have to do that now? Or what's your opinion, though, on that? Get it done now, or? I'm not sure.
That is up to the Development Authority's discretion. Those additional two cabins, they are on a parcel that doesn't have any dwellings on it at this time. And he could actually decide to build dwellings on there as permitted uses and still have them in this use. So it is up to council at this time if they want to allow that or if he wants to... If they leave it in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's his land. It's his land, and if he wants to develop it, then we shouldn't be getting in the way of that. We're talking about developing the MD and creating tourism opportunities, and this is a perfect opportunity, so I think we should go ahead and let him do it.
Include it?
Yeah.
In the motion, all the land is stated already, correct?
Correct.
Or do you have to add land?
All three quarter sections are in the motion. The recommendation number two did have the eight cabins listed in it.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Just had another question on what was the... What was the limit of eight? What was the rationale for eight? That's our limit, I guess, is it?
Yeah, that's just in the land use by law. Normally, these types of developments could just be contained to one quarter section or one parcel of land. So eight is pretty intense when it is only on one quarter section. But so that's the rationale for having a smaller limit. But we are spreading this over three-quarter sections.
Yeah, that's why I didn't think... I mean, if somebody wanted to develop, you know, a spot with a whole bunch of cabins on it, we'll have those discussions later, I guess. But, you know, it'd be great for the area, maybe. I'm not sure. Anyway, thanks.
Yeah, I was just wondering why all three were on there if it wasn't going to be for eight. That's what was my question more than anything, right? So it's up to council. If you guys want to amend this or go to the... This number two is for eight?
Yeah.
It's up to council, I guess? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. If you choose recommendation number two to go to eight, I would just recommend that the mover withdraw that motion and then remove the second option.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
I was just gonna say, if he comes back to us and asks for two more, we're not gonna... I really doubt if we're gonna turn it down if it was doing very well. So I just say, might as well get it done.
Get it done right now? What does the rest of council feel?
That's how I feel. Do you want to withdraw and move to option two, that allows them to do eight cabins instead of six?
I kind of like six better. No, I'll remove it and do option number two. I really don't rather.
He was pretty serious with that one there, yeah. Could be an actor, that man. So do we need a motion to remove that?
Um...
Or just waive it?
Reeve, so Counselor Scarsen did withdraw his motion, and he indicated that he would move for option number two instead.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, thank you, Counselor Scarsen, and you made the second motion as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves development permit application number 2022-D-228, a guest ranch with eight cabins within northeast 1661-1 west of the 4th, northwest 15, and northeast 15 as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 34 of the General Regulations, and Part 6, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Paul Bouget as per the recommendation presented. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to eight, 8.1?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm losing my voice, so I'll try as best I can. So this first application I have... Administration has received and is presenting application 2022-S-010 for council consideration, where the applicant is proposing to subdivide one... Or pardon me, subdivide an existing 10-acre parcel into two 5-acre parcels as shown on the map attached as Appendix A. Notification of proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of October 27th, 2022, to submit concerns to be considered at the November 23rd, 2022 council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. The application meets all conditions of the Municipal Government Act, Subdivision and Development Regulations, and the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw. Therefore, we recommend it be approved as per conditions: Number one, legal and physical access to proposed parcels and remnant; a 17-foot strip along the entire east frontage of the parcel and remnant to be registered by separate road plan; real property report; sewage disposal compliance; and taxes to be paid in full. At this time, administration's recommended action is that council approve subdivision application 2022-S-010 to subdivide an existing 10-acre parcel into two 5-acre parcels from part of southeast 1260-6 west of four for Michael Schiller as per conditions presented.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swagard, for making a motion that council approve subdivision application number 2022-S-010 to subdivide existing 10-acre parcel into two 5-acre parcels from southeast of 1260-6 west of the 4th Meridian for Michael Schiller as per conditions presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
That's Carrie, on to 8.2, thank you.
Administration has received and is presenting application 2022-S-013 for council consideration, where the applicant is proposing to subdivide one 9-acre parcel from a previously unsubdivided agricultural quarter section as shown on the map attached as Appendix A. The proposed 9-acre parcel is to be consolidated with the approximate one acre of closed road allowance by law number 1798 and the northwest 16628 west of the 4th Meridian in order to create a legal and physical access to the northwest 16628 west of four. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of November 1st, 2022, to submit concerns to be considered at the November 23rd council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. For more information on this one, we can take a look at by law... Appendix C, sorry, it was by law 1798, which is a by law that is in motion to do a road closure at this time. It has not yet been approved, but it will be a condition of subdivision. The application meets all conditions of the Municipal Government Act, Subdivision and Development Regulations, and the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw. Therefore, we recommend it be approved as per the conditions: Number one, legal and physical access to proposed parcels and remnant; a 30-meter-by-30-meter service road in the southwestmost corner of southeast 20628 to be registered by separate road plan; the proposed 9-acre parcel from southeast 20628 to be consolidated with road closure described by by law 1798; and the northwest corner 16628 to be registered concurrently, and taxes to be paid in full.
Thank you.
At this time, administration recommends the action that council approve subdivision application 2022-S-013 to subdivide one 9-acre parcel from an unsubdivided agricultural quarter section in southeast 20628 for Linda Kudkoski as per conditions presented.
I guess I'm thanking you twice now. Yes, Counselor?
A couple of questions about... You called it the service road. So 623, is that actually an oil industry service road to Elise?
Township Road 623 is a road. It's an MD road.
But you called it... You referred... Sorry, you referred to it as a service road, though.
No, that particular south... The Township Road 623 terminates at the corner of southwest...
Yeah, no, I can see that, actually.
So what I'm asking for, or in the conditions, where there's a square there at the southmost corner of that is a 30-meter-by-30-meter service road to be dedicated by registered plan to allow for access to the south quarter and to the west quarter. Or south quarter and the north quarter.
So I'll just ask again. So is there somebody living there right now in the nine acres? There's nothing there?
There is no one living there.
So that section, the yellow section, is a service road, though, to a wellsite? Is that... It looks like it might be.
I can speak on that, Mr. Reeve?
Yeah?
That was a road that was constructed by CNRL, and they purchased the road from them, so it's their private road.
Oh, so they own... Okay, that helps, actually. Because I was curious why we were maybe gonna incorporate our road into their 10... Into their nine acres to make a 10-year road.
So...
But we talked about this a while ago, didn't we?
Yes, so through the Reeve, that is a requirement to ensure that there is access to that north quarter and to that south quarter. If we terminated the road where it is, there would be no legal, physical access, and we would be creating a landlock. This is going to make sure that there is no landlock, and there will always be an access, a proper legal, physical access to that north quarter and to that south quarter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion for option one.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves subdivision application number 2022-S-013 to subdivide one 9-acre parcel from the unsubdivided agricultural quarter section in southeast 20628 west of the 4th Meridian for Linda Kudkoski as per the conditions presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
I'd just like to thank the planning staff. This has been a long process. It was a fairly complicated process to find a way for the Kudkoskis to build a house on the far east of that slide. And I think the planning department have done a wonderful job in being creative so we could meet the needs of one of our residents.
All right, good job. I guess we're going to 9.2.1. Agricultural Service. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll be presenting the third quarterly report for the agricultural services this morning. Excuse me. I will start with our beaver reduction and blasting services. 100 tails were brought in with another 89 trapped internally to protect MD infrastructure. Total thus far this year, we have blasted eight dams privately, one dam for the roads, which... And we have mechanically opened 27 dams to protect our infrastructure. Rat inspections this quarter are 83 thus far on the second inspection of the sites as required by our rat and rabies grant. Our three weed inspectors visited 1,790 properties with a total of 291 of these requiring weed control. Canada thistle thrive during our dry season. We completed crop and insect surveys this quarter. In total, we inspected 29 areas for grasshoppers. We completed 16 fields for clubroot. And blackleg and all were negative. Two weed fields were surveyed for phosporium. And two locations were set for birther army worm traps. All were well below the threshold, with the exception of some grasshopper areas. If we have a warm, dry spring, they will be on our watch list. All arterial roads were mowed twice, and the second cut was out to fence line. All rural and local roads were mowed once, and three-quarters of these had a second cut. Our subdivision hamlet mowing program completed mowing of all hamlets, greater shops, tree farm, MD border signs three times this year. All 90 subdivisions were mowed twice. Our MD yard and airport were mowed every two weeks throughout the summer months. Our roadside spraying program had us blanketing all MD roads on a four-year rotation. This year, we completed approximately 514 kilometers. New this year was the fence line spraying program. We had four landowners sign up for spraying of their headlands. We had 4.9 miles, to include eight landowners, of fence line sign up for our brush removal program when erecting a fence. To date, we've paid out one full mile. Our agricultural rental program remained very busy this year. 145 units were rented out for this quarter. We had 48 claims submitted for the VSI program, totaling a little over $6,600 for the third quarter. We were in line with submissions showing similarities to last year. This year, we held our rural beautification and agricultural tour. It was sold out in the first couple of weeks. We had two full coach busloads that toured our local agribusinesses, as well as visited our award winners, Micho Bison Farms and Darrell and Sheri Knapp's Homestead Acreage. In October, we hosted a lunch and learn. The seminar showcased winterizing of trees to keep them healthy and a long tree life. In September, we partnered with ACA with the installation of six surface aeration pumps being installed in Little Bear Lake. This allows for stalk trout to overwinter. Clean Farms has picked up the final load of pesticide recycling containers from our Goodrich site. This site will be permanently closed... site will be permanently closed at the end of this year. The Bonneville site will remain, remain open for one more year in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the Bonneville seed plant has hired an additional full-time labor to help with their visit, their busy season. This time, I will welcome any questions.
Yep, councillor Slipcheck, go ahead.
Okay, you mentioned the Goodrich site is closed up, uh, at the end of the year. Is, uh, do you know where they're gonna be having to dispose of their chemical jugs and all that now?
Through the reef, yes, this will be going back to the retailers, so all chemical jugs will be going back to the retailer, tailors for disposal.
Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadiev.
Good morning. So in regards to your crop inspections with the blackleg or blackroot, so has that kind of, uh, been, well, it's, it's slowed down, has it? Or is that because there's been a dry season? Do you, or is that kind of, has it been stagnant? Just wondering if we have it under control with best practices that you guys implemented?
Yes, through the reef, um, in an ag service board meeting, we had discussions. We used to do a hundred percent canola field inspections, which required a lot of, of time for the staff and a lot of resources. And clubroot is here and it's spreading, and we, the ag service board decided that we would just pick locations that we haven't been, uh, have clubroot in and do less inspections. Uh, with Alberta ag grant, we're only required to do eight.
Okay, so, uh, wasn't expecting that answer. So it, so, so it is increasing because of, uh, because of fewer inspections?
Yes. Clubroot is here, and it will move.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think it's increasing because of fewer inspections. It's just increasing because it's increasing. It's nothing to do with inspections, correct?
Yes, sorry, any soil movement will move clubroot.
That's correct, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, just looking for a motion, I guess.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, councillor Slipcheck, for making a motion that council accepts agricultural service department quarterly report for July, August, and September two thousand twenty-two as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thanks, Janice.
Thank you.
Carrie, thank you. Nine point two two. Good morning.
Good morning, council. I'm here to present the third quarter report for the waste services department. First off, here's a list of landfill visitors to each of the sites over the quarter. It should come up here. There we go, I don't know if you can read that, but Ardmore had three thousand six hundred and sixteen, up five point five percent. Fort Kent had two thousand two hundred and forty-one, up eight point nine percent. Goodrich had three hundred and fifty-one, up fifteen point five percent. Hill Lake had one thousand seven hundred and two, up twenty point six percent. La Coria had one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five, up five point two percent. Muriel Lake had one thousand and thirty-two visitors, up sixty-six point two percent. Theory and had nine hundred and twenty-six, down seven point three percent, for a total of eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-three landfill visitors in quarter three. As per waste collection, with the campgrounds in full swing, we are collecting waste from forty-seven sites around the M D. With the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission, waste hauling continued as scheduled. The new compactor trailer to service the transfer bins at the M D landfills, um, was still undergoing modifications as we approached one year since the time it was supposed to be put into service for us. The new waste hauling contract began July first, and as such, um, our hauling fees went from thirty-six dollars and five cents per ton, up to fifty dollars and forty-nine cents per ton. This will represent a forty-six thousand dollar increase per year, based on our annual tonnage of about, um, thirty-two hundred tons for the, for the year. Um, next, King K. Perry Recycling Services collected metal at all the landfills, uh, in quarter three, and we received an eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollar rebate for that, um, material. Also in quarter three, administration continued working with the city of Cold Lake to develop, uh, a charge account, so M D residents can drop off their bagged household waste and recyclables at the city of Cold Lake landfill. The details of this have been worked out, and now residents are able to register for this program through the M D administration office as a waste utility account. July through September, landfill operators continue tracking city of Cold Lake and town of Bonneville residents who are using the M D landfills. We're doing this tracking to gather data to report back to the Waste Reduction Committee at year's end, about the percentage of users who are not M D taxpayers. In August, the deteriorated asphalt at the North Shore bin site, um, was resurfaced with recycled asphalt from the yard here. By resurfacing the site with recycled asphalt, the project cost approximately five percent of what it would cost to repave, so, um, you know, we thought that was a good, uh, decision to do that. In September, three waste services staff attended the Alberta Care Conference in Laduke, where we toured waste sites in the area and learned about different ways of diverting waste from our landfills. And then lastly, but maybe most importantly, um, the government of Alberta signed an extended producer responsibility, or E P R, um, order in council. A few points to note about the E P R program. Number one, the program will shift the, the physical and financial burden of collection, sorting, processing, and recycling of materials away from local governments and taxpayers, and will put the responsibility back on to the producers of the materials to manage them at their end of life. Number two, the system will focus on residential single-use products, packaging and paper products, as well as hazardous and special products, um, or H S P, as it will be called, and this is the products formerly known as, uh, H H W, or household hazardous waste. Number three, a single province-wide E P R system, collecting a consistent list of products, will save municipal taxpayers money, make recycling and what products that can be recycled easier to understand, make recycling more accessible to communities that don't currently have programs, and encourage better product design by producers. Then number four, this regulation is the foundation for transition and implementation work that is yet to come, and there will be much work between government and stakeholders like us. Oh, I lost my notes. They're there. Uh, govern, work between government and stakeholders like us to put the framework in place. The expected launch of this E P R system will be spring of twenty twenty-five. So in summary, what will this E P R program mean for us? Um, the answer is we'll likely continue operating a recycling collection system as we do currently. The benefit to us, though, will be, um, we will likely be compensated by the producer responsibility organization, or, um, which will be known as the PRO, um, for the collection of materials and the usage of our collection equipment, which would include our trucks and our dumpsters that we, that we currently use right now, so. So that's all I had. Any questions?
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fadiev.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, great report. Uh, I had a, I had a call, somebody read about this on, on, on LinkedIn. Uh, I posted it on there, and so I had a call from, uh, from a citizen asking about E Vs. Uh, so at, at what point are, uh, is the country and the province gonna put E P R on, um, on batteries for, for electric vehicles? Is that being talked about?
So through the reef, to count, uh, Deputy Reeve Fadiev, yeah, it's, it's currently being contact, or sorry, being talked about, um, through the, through the electronics recycling program, actually. So, um, all items will have, uh, producer responsibility put on them, all items that are sold, um, household wide and, or, you know, for households in the province. So, um, electric vehicles are no different in the batteries that, uh, that will be in those vehicles. So there will be a program in place where we can accept those batteries, and then we will be compensated for collecting them and sending them off recycling.
Yeah, because I know, I, I don't think we're, you know, we're at all ready for, for that.
Through the reef, no, um, we're looking at spring twenty twenty-five for when, uh, the C P R program's gonna be put into place. So currently, we do not accept, um, electric vehicle batteries. Um, solar panels are part of the current electronics recycling program, but E V batteries are not, but there is discussion about it.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to the discussion about electrical vehicle batteries. There's a company in B C that actually is, is started up, like, it's probably two or three years old now, that accepts those batteries, and they recycle them and rebuild them and whatever they do with them. But what their concern was that across Canada, Canada doesn't have a process of transporting batteries from, from one province to the next. So anybody that has these batteries that they want to transport to B C, they'd have to go down through the states and then across. So just, it made it really weird. We don't, across Canada, we don't have a transportation system to allow province to province transfer, so they're working on it, but.
Right, just, oh, sorry, councillor Slipcheck, it's on.
Okay, uh, you got there, it says fifty percent of usage was town of Bonneville Cold Lake residents in our landfills, or?
Through the reef, no, um, no, I didn't say that.
No, like, what's, what saves fifty percent there, landfill visitor tracking? Operators continue tracking, say of Cold Lake and town of Bonneville residents using M D landfills? What's?
We're, we're tracking, we're tracking the residents that use, um, any city of Cold Lake and town of Bonneville residents that use the M D landfills. We're tracking that.
So what's the fifty percent? Oh, just completed, okay.
Yeah, sorry, fifty percent complete.
And what are those numbers showing?
Uh, not that many people are admitting to.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, just looking for a motion, then. Yep, councillor Crick. Thank you, councillor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the waste services department quarterly report for July, August, and September two thousand twenty-two as information. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, sir. Carrie, thank you. On to nine point two point three. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Here to present our quarterly report for public safety this morning. On the first slide, uh. All right, so the first slide, uh, has, uh, crime prevention, uh, figures on it. Crime prevention patrols conducted during the third quarter included fire halls, sixteen patrols, three hundred and three patrols to campgrounds. Uh, town halls were fifty-one patrols, a couple of patrols to Kinnis who they had lots of, uh, personnel out there, so the patrols dropped off a little bit. Uh, landfills to seventy-one percent, uh, excuse me, landfills were seventy-one, uh, for twelve percent. Our bin sites received a hundred and thirty-seven patrols, uh, greater shops seventeen patrols, and, uh, I believe we already circled the, the pot on fire wagons there. Um, over the, the changing seasons, obviously, our patrol priorities change a little bit. Uh, campgrounds are less of a concern right now, so we're gonna be looking more at some of the M D infrastructure, as well as the garbage, which continues to be an ongoing issue, so moving forward into the, into the fall and winter. Still partnering with our industry partners, CNRL, Baytex, Novus, Imperial Oil, uh, deliver patrol services to their well sites and service roads. In the third quarter of this year, we delivered three hundred and thirty hours of patrol services to our industry partners on a fee-for-service basis. The next slide is commercial vehicles. Uh, commercial vehicles are, uh, obviously a big, uh, a big element to our community. Uh, two hundred and, excuse me, uh, during this quarter, two thousand twenty-two, we conducted a hundred and five commercial vehicle inspections, resulting in thirty-five trucks being pulled from service. Some of these were just, you know, temporary until repairs could be done roadside, or they could be, uh, in some cases escorted to a, a safe location for repairs to be done. Uh, overweight vehicles, damaged M D roads, and are a priority for public safety. Uh, this quarter, twelve violators were apprehended. Um, in one case, the fine issued was an excessive eight thousand dollars, so considerably overweight. Um, next slide, just some, again, some common things that we found. Uh, these are all, uh, local photos taken from, by our officers. Got some mud on the top of a, uh, of a trailer. We've got some airbags that are deflated on a trailer as well. Uh, just continuing on here. Um, tie downs within a, a trailer, and absolutely nothing, uh, securing these totes. I've got some damaged airbags as well. Continue to see tires off beads, and we see some, um, examples of some tire tread issues, wires showing and whatnot. Um, this particular structure was being moved near the Goodrich area with absolutely no tie downs whatsoever. Nothing holding that structure in place. Okay, next slide. Again, during this quarter only, provincial tickets, two hundred and twenty-eight, provincial warnings, three hundred and seventy-three, and then bylaw tickets as well, uh, for the quarter. And then the next slide has an indication of where we've been, for how long, and how, the distance that we've traveled there. Uh, you can see that the wards, uh, represented at the top. Um, trying to get our numbers up a little bit, Ward six, we have been communicating that to our officers. Uh, Glendon, Ardmore, Cherry Grove, and Fort Kent also represented. Almost sixty thousand kilometers driven by our officers in this quarter. Just leave that up for a few more seconds, then I'll take questions. If not, I'll, uh, I'll move the slide. Go ahead. Typical complaints that we get, dog control and livestock, for whatever reason, uh, that's been a, a growing issue this, this year. You can see over, year over year, from twenty nineteen into twenty twenty-two, a dog control and livestock complaints have been fairly consistent, fifty, fifty, forty-eight, and we jumped up to eighty-three this year. Uh, meanwhile, unsightly properties have come down. Uh, there were a couple of frequent properties that would generate a lot of complaints for us. Um, some of those have been dealt with as a long-term solution, so I suspect that may be why we're seeing a reduction in unsightly property numbers. Uh, parking complaints, fairly standard, noise complaints, again, fairly standard. Uh, significant drop in A T V and snowmobile complaints, or you, off-highway vehicle complaints in this quarter. Um, but unfortunately, garbage, loose loads, and traffic complaints more than made up for the reductions that we saw. So we've actually got a bit of an upward trend as far as calls for service coming in, uh, for the third quarter anyway. Went from a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and thirty-seven, and now two hundred and twenty-two in the third quarter this year. Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Sorry, it's not a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's a comment, and, and just like, traffic complaints are going up, and, and I just, if you went back to the slide where you have the types of tickets and warnings, uh, three hundred and seventy-three provincial warnings, and then two hundred and twenty-eight provincial tickets. So we're being really nice guys, or are we? Like, should that be a fifty-fifty split, or should it be the other way? I, I'm not sure.
Well, it's, uh, you know, it, yes, I, I, I understand the, the, excuse me, through the reef, I understand the, the discussion, uh, the comment. Um, and, uh, you know, it's a bit of a catch-twenty-two in the sense that tickets are, are good, uh, tickets laid typically generate trials, our officers spend more time in court, uh, so it's a bit of a balancing act. Um, and, uh, you know, we try to do education with every stop. We try to make every stop positive if we can. We understand that inherently when you're getting a ticket, or you're being detained, or, or delayed, is maybe a better word. Uh, it's not a very positive experience. So we really try to, uh, make sure that when somebody, uh, does, uh, get the inconvenience of being pulled over for an offense, uh, that they receive a positive, uh, I guess, uh, an outcome as well as, as, uh, uh, you know, as, as a charge if, if that's needed. Um, but I do agree that, uh, I think those numbers are fairly, um, I, I do believe it's been climbing. Uh, there was a time when our provincial tickets versus warnings were considerably, uh, more lopsided than they are now. So the message is getting through to the officers. Uh, I think we need to just give it time, and, and I think we'll see those numbers continue to climb. Uh, that has been communicated to the officers, so, um, I, I do expect to see an improvement there. Uh, I think we're back to Petty Trespass Act. Petty Trespass Act, uh, we saw four investigations in the quarter. Um, not a lot of those types of complaints, um, get called in. A lot of times, we've got people who own open land, open spaces that don't bother phoning, because they're, they probably realize that there's little that can be done unless we can apprehend them at the time. But, um, nevertheless, we did feel four of those complaints, and once again, as a reminder to council, we don't deal with trespass complaints on structures, only on open land. If we're dealing with trespass complaints to structures, that usually involves us having to clear a property to make sure that nobody's still inside the property, and we're not trained or equipped to really to do that. So we deal only with open spaces concerning trespass. So we deal only with open spaces concerning trespass. Next slide. Community standards, we talked about this already a little bit. Numbers did come down. Again, there was some some properties that were generating a lot of complaints, so I think we've we've already covered that part of it off. Dogs have been a bit of a concern, as I, as I mentioned earlier. Eighty-two dog complaints, year over year, it's over a hundred percent increase from the third quarter of last year. So we are looking at making a few changes. I think the consolidated bylaws up for discussion actually later on this morning. So we'll have an opportunity to discuss some of those changes, uh, with council at that time. Next slide deals with the SRO program. Again, uh, you know, this is sort of a, I don't want to sound like a broken record. These folks are working very hard, twenty-three area schools, three school divisions, over nine thousand students, countless presentations. And we've been doing some intermural work with the students as well, playing floor hockey and that kind of thing with them. We we had a, we, there was a challenge day here with the RCMP, so we tried to, uh, get the upper hand on them, um, as well. So we've got some of those intermurals also working their way into the system. Uh, moving forward too, we've got partnerships. It's always better to have, um, you know, all hands on deck when we're trying to tackle the same issues. So we've really focused on improving our partnerships, um, this year. Eighteen law enforcement-related projects or files, uh, we assisted on or cooperated with the various agencies, primarily the RCMP. We work with the BRFA quite frequently as well at accident scenes and that kind of thing. But primarily, some of the pre-planned and executed projects that we're we're running are mainly the RCMP and also the provincial sheriffs. We work closely with them as well. And the last slide is just a few highlights, um, uh, maybe to bring some information and some levity to the conversation. Highest recorded speed, two hundred and seven kilometers per hour in a one hundred kilometer an hour zone. Highest fine assessed, again, this was an overweight, eighty thousand and sixty-five dollars. Again, that's based on the the actual weight limit, um, the amount over the limit. Largest dog litter seize, unfortunately, our our dogs that we see sometimes come in pairs or even it's a mama dog with her with her, uh, with her litter. So that can create problems for us. Commercial vehicle inspections done in one day, about fourteen, that was in a twelve-hour shift between two officers. And then again, the rest is self-explanatory. Most students taught in one day, four hundred plus. Community events attended one weekend, and there was five that we attended over one weekend over the summer. So trying to get out in front of the, uh, community as well at some of these community events in uniform, interacting with the kids, uh, doing some of that community stuff. It's not all enforcement, but at the same time, we've got to find that balance, so. Thank you. And that's my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Good morning, Mr. Gandolfi, how are you?
Good morning, thank you.
Uh, so a couple of weeks ago, uh, it was on Saturday, I attended a Cherry Grove volunteer night, and, uh, there were some, quite a bit of talk and concern about the shooting in the area. They were asking me about it, and I I really didn't know. The next day, I met up with CEO Hogan in Edmonton for our make conference. I asked him about it, and he really didn't know, and he contacted you, and and by surprise, he didn't know as well. Could you update council to to the events that happened in, uh, I guess, a couple of wards, right, from my understanding?
What I can, through the reef, uh, to Counsel for the, what I what I can, um, to Deputy Reeve today, excuse me. What I can do is is provide you some general information. I don't have, uh, all the information. I did a conversation with the commander in Cold Lake. And, um, you know, I guess what happens with us being so close to the border with another province. It's not, it's not just another detachment, but it's another province. They have a different communication system than we have in Alberta. In Alberta, we have a system called AFRACS, which is a standardized communication system that integrates fire EMS, police, and a bunch of other provincial agencies into one, uh, system. That doesn't exist in Saskatchewan. They have a completely different radio system. And frankly, I think that, uh, the RCMP in Saskatchewan, where this was unfolding, really ought to have at least picked up the phone if if maybe the radio wasn't set up properly and notified the commander in Cold Lake or or whoever was on shift in Cold Lake at the time. So what ended up happening was there was a complaint of a vehicle theft in the Saskatchewan side of, uh, of the border. And, uh, the homeowner had located the vehicle or or found the vehicle, intercepted, uh, intercepted them doing what they were doing. In any case, there ended up being a bit of a pursuit between the homeowner and the offenders. And there were some shots fired, um, there were some injuries as well and to the, uh, to the homeowner. And, uh, as they, as that pursuit, if you will, carried on into Alberta, there was a lack of communication and disclosure on the part of the Saskatchewan detachment, I suppose. These things happen very, very quickly. These things happen sometimes in a matter of seconds. And, uh, you know, one of the words or phrases that we often hear in the policing world is as soon as practicable, that's when something ought to be done. So I would suggest to you that, uh, you know, not having all the details, um, it wasn't done in a, in 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 that, uh, kind of timeline or that frame, timeframe, as soon as practicable. Because what ended up happening was, uh, the situation terminated south in the Elk Point area. So they actually never really made it too far west into Alberta there, other than coming west on fifty-five. They they carried on south on eight ninety-seven, and, um, they were apprehended, or there was an an interdiction there that took place. So it has been, because I I know that when I received the phone call from from the CEO, I was uncomfortable with with the fact that I didn't know. And then, of course, that's further up the the line that nobody else knew, so I did contact the commander there. I was very surprised to hear that he didn't know either. So, um, yeah, there was a bit of a a ball that was maybe dropped on that one. And we've had extensive communication and discussion about that since then. And, uh, you know, although there's no formal requirement for them to report things of that nature to us, it certainly is something that we appreciate knowing. Our officers alone, just in public safety, might have been in that area, and it's always good to stay out of situations like that that we can't participate in. But, yeah, I think that there's some lessons learned on this one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, just looking for a motion then. Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadav, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the Public Safety Department quarterly report for July, August, and September for two thousand twenty-two as information. Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Reed.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't ask the question I asked you in the Police Committee. The person going two oh seven was not, uh, was let off by the judge, right? Is there a reason why? Did he get a reason why?
Uh, that's correct. So through the reef to Council, that two oh seven, uh, kilometer an hour speeding charge that we laid was withdrawn ultimately. There was a concern on the part of the Crown with the way that the evidence, with the evidence, the amount of evidence that was collected. Having reviewed the file myself, I don't see an issue. And we've communicated that back to the Crown as well. So I don't know where the thought process was there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Can we take a five-minute break? Yeah, it's before we go into public hearing. All right. Thank you, Mike, Mike. We have a public hearing, uh, this morning. Just going to read out what we're, how we're going to go about it. Uh, before we begin with public hearing, I'd like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of the council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with staff report from administration, followed up by questions of administration from council. Next, we can, we will call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenters during this time only. The applicant, being administration, will then be provided an opportunity to re, but anything they have heard or read in the opposition of their application, followed by the questions of the applicant from council, only on information provided during the rebuttal. Finally, we will entertain any final questions of administration from council before closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to go into public hearing? Counselor Crick. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion that the public hearing for item four one be open at nine, sorry, at ten oh nine AM. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. This morning, we have a public hearing for bylaw number eighteen-ten, which is a roadway licensing bylaw. Roadway licensing bylaw eighteen-ten would authorize the MD of Bonneville to enter into an agreement to license the road allowance west of the southwest of nineteen sixty-five of one, west of the fourth meridian, in accordance with policy number three A point zero one eight, as shown on the map on Appendix A. The applicant has applied for the license in order to enter into encroachment agreement within municipality for the continued use of an existing cabin built in nineteen thirty-five, as shown on the map labeled Appendix B. Council did give first reading to bylaw eighteen-ten on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Okay, I'm just reaching out to see if anybody here to support this. Again, I'm reaching out, anybody here wishing to speak for this? And for the third and final time, I'm seeing if anybody else wants to speak about this. Okay, seeing none, I'll shift over the presenter in opposition. Does anyone want to speak in opposition of this? Again, does anyone want to speak in opposition of this? And for the third and final time, does anyone want to speak in opposition of this? Okay. I guess I just look for a motion to close this public hearing then.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Subject, for making a motion on behalf of council that the public hearing be closed at ten thirteen AM. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Moving on to the next public hearing for bylaw LU five four, land use bylaw amendment, beekeeping. Before we begin the public hearing, I would like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of chamber council. Council chambers, I mean. I would also like to outline the process in the following for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, followed by questions by of administration from council. Next, we will call upon the members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenters during this time only. The applicant, being administration, will then be provide, will then be provided an opportunity to re, but anything they have heard or read in opposition of their application, followed by the questions of the applicant from council, only the information provided during the rebuttal. Finally, we will entertain any final questions of administration from council before closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to go into public hearing? Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadav, for making a motion on behalf of council that the public hearing for item four point two be opened at ten fifteen. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Would you be able to open up Appendix B there? If possible, could I steal the mouse, do a scroll? Thank you. All right, uh, so thank you, Reeve, and council, uh, for this opportunity to talk. Today, we will be holding the public hearing regarding the proposed update to the land use bylaw, uh, number sixteen sixty-seven, to facilitate beekeeping as a use within the MD of Bonneville. I'll briefly review the changes, uh, the proposed changes, uh, for the public and to refresh council. So the largest amount of proposed changes occurs under section forty-nine, uh, with the addition of forty-nine point seven to provide regulations regarding beekeeping on residential, industrial, commercial, and agriculturally, uh, zoned parcels. Please keep in mind, this is for the beekeeping use only. This is separate from commercial beekeeping, which is found under intensive agriculture and extensive agriculture. So the, uh, regulations, uh, proposed additions here include, uh, hives shall be located thirty meters from the property line adjacent to schools or public spaces. Hive shall be located within the rear yard. Hive shall be located three meters from all property lines. Two hives per property, a temporary, temporary third hive may be allowed for a period of one month. A one point eight meter tall barrier shall surround the hive, and hive entrances shall be located away from walkways and adjacent properties where possible. Continuing on. So the chart under section sixty-eight was updated to show, uh, under which districts beekeeping is permitted or discretionary. So under agricultural, we have both permitted and discretionary. Country residential, RCR one, it is discretionary. Country residential, CR two, it is discretionary. And then under, uh, rural, commercial, and rural, industrial, uh, they are both permitted. So scrolling down here to the agricultural district, um, the beekeeping use will be allowed under the agricultural district as both permitted and discretionary. Beekeeping will be a permitted use on parcels greater than four point zero four hectares or ten acres. And there will be a discretionary on parcels smaller than four point zero four, uh, hectares or ten acres. This allows the municipality, uh, a little bit more control and consideration of beekeeping applications on smaller agricultural parcels that may be surrounded by, uh, other residential parcels. It's not always the case that we're looking at full quarter sections. There are often times where they are surrounded by other residential properties. Moving on here to the country residential, uh, CR one district, uh, it is listed as a discretionary discretionary use. Uh, it is extremely likely that these parcels will be surrounded by other residential properties due to the minimum size being, uh, one point two hectares or three acres for the district. This currently has the greatest potential for con- This currently has the greatest potential for conflicts or other interactions to arise with the implementation of the beekeeping use. However, with the additional regulations that we discussed under section forty-nine, administration is confident that these regulations will alleviate those interactions. Additionally, it was put as a discretionary use to allow the MD that flexibility in approving the use where it isn't possible to alleviate those concerns. And then, similar to the CR two district here, so it was added as a discretionary use. This one, the CR two district, has a minimum size which allows for parcels to be two hectares or four point nine four acres in size. So, again, at this point, we're getting into larger properties and a little bit further distancing from other residential properties. If you forgive me for just one second as I scroll on to the next part. So, beekeeping was added to the rural, commercial, RC district as a permitted use. It is expected that this district will generally be larger than residential parcels with more landscaping, parking, and uses that may provide a buffer between the beekeeping use and other adjacent parcels. Additionally, the RC districts are typically surrounded by agricultural, industrial, or other commercial parcels. It is expected that beekeeping would have minimal impact on adjacent properties, and as such, it was proposed to be in a permitted use. And similarly, under the RI or rural industrial district, it is listed as a permitted use. Again, it's expected that these parcels will be larger and with less interaction with smaller residential parcels. So, moving on to the definitions here, we start with apiary, which was added to differentiate between beekeeping and the intensive agricultural and extensive agricultural uses that I had mentioned before. Beekeeping was also added just below here, which notes that the keeping of bees to produce honey for personal use. So, the key, key term here is for personal use and not for commercial. Additionally, hive was added and means any container that houses or holds colony of bees, a colony of bees, sorry. And then, finally, under intensive agriculture here, we can see that beekeeping, the terminology of beekeeping, was removed, again, just to help with differentiating between those uses. So, the administration did send out referrals for comments, both to stakeholders and affected landowners. So, regarding referrals and comments, this proposed update was referred to surrounding municipalities based upon the corresponding IDPs and other possible stakeholders. While no comments were received that provided any concerns, AEP or Alberta Environment did provide additional information regarding the use of vacant crown land being used for the placement of bee hives associated with commercial bee enterprise. So, if anyone were to have any questions from the public or council regarding some of the steps that may be taken to allow the use of crown land, that was sent to us. Additionally, two calls were received from the public regarding the land use bylaw update, concerns regarding the restricted placement of the hives and the available zonings such as not being available in the CR resort district. Administration is currently looking in to address some of these concerns and possibly presenting amendments with the second reading. Additionally, concerns regarding the placement of hives, there was specifically a note that it is, under the regulations, it's determined that the hives need to be placed in the rear yard. However, this is something that can be varied, have a variance, and move to other locations on a case-by-case kind of context. Other comments received were addressed towards clarity of the update, requesting specific changes to the definitions and terminology used throughout the update. For example, using the term honeybee rather than just bees in general, or providing a better understanding of required barriers to encompass all hives. So, this could be along the lines of what was suggested, a beekeeping site, just so that it's not confused that a barrier needs to be around each individual hive and can be placed around the general area used for all of the hives. Again, this is something that administration is looking to amend or propose to be amended at second reading. And then, just to kind of put a little cap at the end here, I would like to clarify that this update is for beekeeping use only. There was no touch to the commercial aspect of beekeeping and its regulation under the land use bylaw. All of that is being maintained under the intensive agricultural and extensive agricultural use. This is, the update to this has been specifically for beekeeping to allow it within smaller residential, smaller commercial, industrial, and smaller agricultural lots for personal use. So, there is, there is no, no change at this time with this update for the commercial side of beekeeping. And with that, I would like to thank you for your time and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Counselor Slupczak.
So, with this new bylaw, what we're doing, we're promoting more beekeeping for our communities, aren't we, with this new proposal, so that people in residential areas can have bees and help with our pollinating and everything of our gardens, flowers, and everything, correct?
That's correct, yes. We're looking to allow for smaller amount of hives within residential areas. Obviously, bees have been come very endangered species with pollinating and being so important to agricultural aspect, and so they are important to the MD, and that is something that we would obviously like to support and keep going as best as possible. However, we didn't have any regulations for smaller, smaller beekeeping prior to this update, and so this is looking to address that.
Sorry, Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Good morning. Thanks for the update. So, could you kind of remind us, again, why we are making the changes? And my second question is, what, you know, the, the meaning of, of commercial, according to the province, what that means on their part?
So, the reason for the update, as kind of mentioned before, is just that we had no previous regulations to allow for the beekeeping use or any beekeeping use on a smaller scale. It was limited entirely to the intensive and extensive agricultural use, which are limited to, they are required to be on sites of twenty acres or more, and they are limited to only the agricultural district. With this, we open up the number of districts that are allowed to have beekeeping, although it may be small in terms of size, we limit it to two hives. It is for the purpose, personal use on smaller properties, so to limit that impact on surrounding residential properties is the intent on that. Commercial as a, as a definition under the province, that is something I would have to confirm and get back to you for the exact definition. However, generally, it's any number of hives for the commercial or distribution of honey and to stores and businesses.
They have separate regulations and guidelines from the province as well then, right?
Yes, that's correct. So, they, with any, with any hives, there needs to be registration under the Alberta, the province of Alberta, and they get a license through the province. In addition, that would be on top of our own development permit approval.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Any other questions?
So, just a question for clarity, the twenty acres in an, they had to be on in an egg, was that a provincial rule or our previous land use bylaw?
No, that is just under our current land use bylaw. That's what it has been. It's, if that's something that would like to be changed, that can be direction from council to provide an amendment at second reading to alleviate some of the restrictions around commercial beekeeping. But however, like I mentioned, with this update, there is no, no changes to that at this time, and there was no, no intent to change that, so it is being left alone.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, well, thank you. Appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to announce that there was no written submissions that have been provided in the agenda, and I'm going to open up for the presenters in support. You'll have five minutes or ten minutes, five minutes for an individual, ten minutes for a group. So, I'm going to open the floor if anyone wants to support this. Yes, come on up, sir.
Morning, Counselor Kalinsky and council members. Sheldon Totozy. I'm kind of the one that started all this a couple of years ago. I want to thank Counselor Swiger for helping me through the process. The background, kind of bad on my part, didn't realize the bylaws, got a couple of hives, and then was subsequently informed that, that I had to move them off my property, which is, I believe it's CR one, just shy of three acres. Started the process to see how I could, could get a couple of hives on my property. Just a couple of questions that I have right now. I believe one was addressed with the location of the hives. I've got a variance currently for my two hives. They reside in my front yard, just based on the way my lot is laid out and the trees and such. I believe I heard that there will be a possibility, I would like to keep my hives in my front yard, just the way the trees are laid out. They're well back from the house, and they meet all the requirements for setbacks from neighbors and property lines. So, one of my questions was, is there discretion, maybe on an individual basis, for the actual location, which it sounds like there may well be. My second was looking for a little bit more clarity on the barrier. My, my particular lot is, is a hundred percent tree, with just my yard basically cut out. My hives actually sit in a small utility right away for the gas line, but basically surrounded by trees. My question was, does that qualify, or could that qualify as the barrier that is addressed in the proposed changes? I guess that's open for some discussion, or again, maybe that's a, maybe that's an individual variance on a case-by-case basis. Otherwise, I, I obviously am, I'm for this and don't have any other concerns. Those are just the two questions that I had.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to open the floor up. Does anyone else want to speak in favor of this? Well, asked for a second time, does anyone else want to speak in favor of this? And for the third and final time, does anyone want to speak in favor of this? Okay, seeing no more, I'll switch it over to opposition. Is anyone, you'll have five minutes or ten minutes for a group, just going to open it up if anyone's opposed to this bylaw.
Reeve, counselors, my name is David Tharrell. I'm partner in TNT Apres. We've been located in the MD since nineteen eighty-six. We run twenty-four hundred hives and three thousand, three hundred nukes. In essence, I'm a commercial operation, and from most of what I see in this bylaw doesn't affect me. However, I do have some suggestions, and I did have the pleasure of speaking to Mr. Perch last week and offering some of the changes, and I've seen a couple of other things there, and I've also seen, heard this morning, and maybe I was confused, that perhaps we've been living illegally for however long of time, because when we registered with the MD in nineteen eighty-six, we were on a four hectare parcel, not twenty acres, nine point eight eight. And that was one of the things that, reading through the bylaw, I noticed that you're specific in saying four point zero four hectares and ten acres, and I was wondering, when you have so many ten acre, or four hectare parcels that are not truly ten acres, why the specification was made in the, in the bylaw changes? One of the things that I'd like to suggest to add, and the reason I voted no was, I'm not against a beekeeping bylaw, I'm, was against it as written. I would like to suggest, we're not the first down this road, there've been many municipalities in the province that have done this previously, and one of the things that have been very successful is the requirement for an educational component. There's plenty of courses online, you either have it to demonstrate, you've had a mentor, you've taken a course from Nate, you've taken a course from ABC, there's a couple of private companies. What I've seen in the last couple of years with resurgence of beekeeping is that we have people walking into the co-op, PV Mart, Costco even sold them for a while, buying a kit, taking it home, throwing it behind the house, in front of the yard, wherever, and it's, it's not like keeping chickens. And especially, I've been in this business since I was sixteen years old, I'm sixty-four now, turning sixty-five, and I thought by the time I got to this age, the learning curve would kind of leveled out. In the last five, ten years, with the world having gotten smaller, more diseases, more parasites, a friend of mine, same age as I, we were talking, the hockey, it's a hockey step progression, it seems like. I'm probably learning more and having to be on the bit more now than I was twenty years ago. When I started nineteen seventy-six, we had two bacterial infections in one gut fungus. Now, we have multiple viruses, we have two, two parasites, one that live on the outside, one that lives on the inside, and we have variants that have jumped across species from the Asian honeybee, for example. So, education is really important, because I, I get calls, especially because there are five commercial operations within the MD. I'm the one that's right in the MD, the other ones mostly are coming in from the west side, Malaga and St. Lina, and so I get a lot of the calls of like, this is what's happening with my bees, what is it? And a lot of times, it's just very basic questions. It's not like keeping chickens, it's not even as easy as keeping a pig or a cow in the backyard. Get me in front of Mike, everyone, I tend to water, so I see, I'll get two minutes. I'm, I'm finding, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the definition between a beekeeper and an apri. You, what I was able to see is, this is the only municipality that's trying to do that, and I find the definition a little fuzzy, and I think it's, unless I'm not clear, we could end up where beekeepers and the MD are spending a lot of time trying to jostle around because maybe a third party is, is trying to say something based on the definitions of the rules we have now. I suggested, for example, the change to specify honeybees, because there are mason bees, there are leaf cutter bees, there are all those sort of things, but I'm finding that a little fuzzy, and I'd like some more clarification on that. Educational component. As far as the definition, too, speaking a little further, for example, our, our association provincially uses a hundred hives as the breakpoint, but there are a lot of people with fifty hives that are, they're selling all their product, doing it as a semi-retirement component, and selling all their product through farmers' markets and even in stores. And I think you could find yourselves, unless it's coming down to a very specific number or something, in a bit of a gray area that may cause you bylaws some problems in the I think that was all the points that I'd heard so far this morning, oh, the fence. I just wanted to suggest is a change, as I say, we've not been down this before, but other provinces have, or other parts of the province have. In the Evanton, which has had a fairly successful beekeeping programs to twenty seventeen, they say hives should be located at least three meters from all property lines where there are adjacent neighbors, unless the property is separated from the adjacent neighbor by a solid fence or vegetation, at least one point five meters tall, six feet. But they're not suggesting surrounding the entire hives, which I would suggest be detrimental to the hives, they're suggesting closer neighbors. I'd take any questions the council might have, or Reeve.
No, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, I'm putting it out there, if anyone else wants to speak in opposition to this? Yes, come on up, sir.
Morning.
I'm Roger Denway. I operate in the MD with about ten hives, and I sell honey from the farm gate, basically. I'm, I'm not imposed of a bylaw, but if the laws have to be created over beekeeping, we're willing to work with, with the MD. I just went through a couple of points last night. last night. The bylaws does not have, appear to have any allowance for mid-sized beekeepers like me. It's either you're a hobby guy with two hives, or you're a commercial operation. It doesn't. And as far as I can read it, the bylaw seems to overreach a lot. I'm, my impression is that no other bylaws affect agricultural operations on parcels over 10 acres. I could be mistaken, but that was one of the points I had. If, the way I understand it, if, if I'm not a hobby beekeeper, I'm a commercial beekeeper, and that the bylaw presently would, I'd have to apply for an intensive livestock operation, wherever I keep my bee hives, similar to a feedlot. I could be wrong. But considering that we move the hives throughout the year, and from year to year, depending on what is planted in which fields, it creates an awful lot of extra paperwork bureaucracy. And the timely manner which we'd have to apply for that or move hives does not, does not seem right. I'd like to emphasize the educational requirement for the Dave brought up as well, not only for beekeepers, so that they're not experimenting and spreading diseases, but for MD staff that are creating the bylaws, so they, they understand what they're writing. And if bylaws pass, that enforcement, peace officers would have to require, go through training as well, so they understand what, they understand the industry. As far as having only two hives in your backyard, as far as bee behavior goes, it's a little unrealistic. Bees by their nature multiply and grow, they spread their genetic material and fly away. So, yeah, without splitting your hives, you're kinda creating a problem. And, oops, forgive me. Yeah. And if you're restricting, if you're restricting beekeepers as well to two hives, we have a lot of winter kill. There are lots of things that kill bees. So half of your hives could die from a yearly basis, and you're, you never have enough resources to replace them. So you're really setting up the hobbyist for failure. And I guess a solid fence is a little unclear, but it sounds like it's been cleared up this morning, whether it's, whether it's a see-through fence, or whether it's just built sturdy. It sounds like you're referring to a solid, non-see-through fence.
That's the majority of, majority of what I had to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I'll just ask if anyone else is opposed to this bylaw? Okay, for the second time, is anyone else opposed? And for the third and final time, is anyone opposed? Okay, seeing none, I'll just ask if the administration wants to say anything more?
Thank you. Just to make a few comments regarding some of the concerns that were raised here. So for the barrier clarity of solid trees, things along those lines, there's intended to be flexibility on that. So trees, if there is a number of trees that provide a suitable barrier, that would be allowed. We're not looking to specifically always have a fence or a wall or whatever it may be put up in place. Obviously, if there's enough vegetation or enough of a barrier, we would consider that at the time of application. So that was, that was one thing. For other concerns regarding placement of the hives and stuff, as I mentioned before, variances are allowed, and again, on a case-by-case basis. Concerns regarding the 4.04 hectares versus the 10 acres, that largely came about due to our own subdivision process. Often, people are coming in with five, 10 to 20-acre subdivision sizes. It's not often that we get a 4.0 hectare subdivision. It's usually on, for the smaller parcels, we're looking at the acre size. For the educational component, with that, if, if this update was to be passed, that would be something that we would continue to do over the years, for, both for ourselves and our staff members, and obviously for the public, creating pamphlets and such. That's just something that would come along with introducing the use. And something that we are very, we are very in support of. Regarding the kind of commercial size versus hobby size here, again, that's what's currently in place under the land use bylaw. If there, if there's a desire to have that changed, or have another kind of middle ground, or reduce of the requirements for the commercial use, that would have to be another, either update to this, or an amendment to this update, or an entirely change to the intensive and extensive agricultural use. And I believe that covered most of the comments that came through here. I would also just like to thank the public for coming out, obviously, providing their concerns and stuff, where we wanna address that. And they provided great comments for us to consider, so. Thank you.
I believe that perhaps I was not clear enough, that there's a misinscrue about the education component. I don't mean for people to be educated about the bylaw. I mean specifically, in other jurisdictions, you have to take a beekeeping course, a starting beekeeping course, that you have to show that you've passed and completed, before the municipality will issue you a license to have your bee hives. Edmonton, Calgary, I believe the MD of Rocky View, those are ones that I know of for sure. The, both Calgary and Edmonton for sure, I believe Red Deer. But it's been found extremely useful. And it's, it's not to notify everybody that the bylaw exists, it's the fact that you, before you walk into this game, and quite truthfully, it's not a cheap hobby anymore. You're probably gonna drop two grand just getting yourself started with a couple of hives. The bees are 300 bucks a crap, crack, and they can die just in a heartbeat. So, you know, that's where I'm having the problem, is these people, they spend a couple of grand, and they come, oh, if my wife finds out that he's going to die, she's gonna kill me. Which probably happened in a couple of cases. But it's, it's the educational component about, is the individual keeping the hives. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any final questions, administration? All right, thank you. I'm just looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Yep. Thank you, Councilor Krevjak, for making a motion on behalf of council. The public hearing be closed at 10:48. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Kerry, thank you. I think we'll take another five-minute break, and then we'll continue. Okay, welcome back. I believe we're at 9.2.4. That's Lakeland Rural Cat Spade and Neuter Clinic update.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
You're welcome.
Okay. On September 28th, 2022, representatives in the Lakeland Rural Cats Bay and Neuter Clinic attended council to request funding for the program. This delegation should not be confused with the SPCA as a, as a sort of do similar things. However, they are distinctly different organizations. Unfortunately, the, the organization is not presently set up to conform to the requirements of the community by, excuse me, the Community Action Grant Program, which is where requests like this should be routed through. So we are requesting that council direct administration, excuse me, that the council accepts the Lakeland Rural Cat Spade and Neuter Clinic update as information, and furthermore directs administration to refer the Lakeland Rural Cat Spade and Neuter Clinic to the Community Action Grant Policy, pending required changes to become an eligible applicant. And we are working with them presently, behind the scenes, to get them eligible under that program.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Just looking for a motion, I guess, then? Okay. Thank you, Councilor Krevjak, for making a motion on behalf of, oh, sorry. Thank you, Councilor Slipcheck, for making, no. That's only my first mistake today. Thank you, Councilor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the Lakeland Rural Cat Spade and Neuter Clinic update as information, and furthermore directs administration to refer Lakeland Rural Cat and Spade and Neuter Clinic to the Community Action Grant Policy, pending required changes to become eligible applicant. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Kerry, thank you. Onto bylaw 1812.
I apologize. Excuse me, Mr. Reeve, I'm having a bit of an issue here with my connection. But I'll just have to read from the, from the television.
Your laptop looks like it could go to a war compared to mine.
It's, it is a tough book, but, oh, thank you. All right, the Public Safety Department deals with numerous MD bylaws on a regular basis, some much more frequently than others. To simplify the enforcement process and to complete a review of our bylaws, it was decided to consolidate our more frequently used bylaws into one consolidated public safety bylaw. The bylaw selected for inclusion included the following. Number one, traffic services, which is bylaw 1610, nuisance properties, which is number 981, animal control at 1371, cannabis, cannabis consumption at 1704. There was a UAV or drone bylaw that was in the preparation stages, had not yet been sworn into or accepted by council, and also a noise control bylaw, which was 1657. And administration is asking that council give first reading to this bylaw. Conducting a review and update of old bylaws helps reduce the risk to the MD, ensuring that the old and out-of-date provincial, excuse me, by ensuring that old and out-of-date provincial legislation is no longer referred to within our bylaws, we strengthen our legal footing should prosecutions be necessary. We would also ensure that our frequently used public safety bylaws remain aligned with the current strategic plan. The committee of the whole reviewed bylaw number 1812 on October 19th, 2022, and recommended that council pass the bylaw as presented. Attached for council's review is the bylaw 1812, proposed as appendix A. Strategic Plan references include enhancing safety in the community and enhancing livability in the community. So there's a variety of provincial and federal legislation references as well. And the recommendation from administration is that bylaw 1812, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number 87, to establish regulation for the safety and security of the public within the municipality, be given first reading.
Thank you. Any questions or looking for a motion?
I have a question.
Councilor Crick.
Is it, sorry, my, my internets have a hard time here, too, and I can't see anything on my screen. Is it just the consolidation of, of previous law bylaws, or was there changes made to any of them?
Through the, the read to Councilor Crick, there were some changes. There were some updates made to fine amounts. There was also some updates made to the wording of the bylaw, eliminating some of the provincial legislation that was previously referenced in the bylaw. And there was also some structural changes to some of the items as well, that had to do with, I mean, the bylaw encapsulates a variety of different topics, dog control, animal control. As I said, the drone bylaw, which was brand new, hadn't yet been, before council was included in the new consolidated bylaw 1812. So there have been a few structural changes, as well as some more administrative changes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to go into first reading.
All right, thank you, Councilor Crick, for making the motion on behalf of council that bylaw number 1812, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number 87, to establish regulations for safety and security of the public within the municipality, be given first reading. Any discussion? Yes, Councilor Skarsen?
Yeah, I would just, I guess I was under assumption that there was no changes, just because there was no markups in the draft. So I guess I would just say that, you know, if we're making changes to bylaws, to mark it up, so that we know the changes, I guess. I just thought it was, you're just consolidating into one bylaw when I read it at first, so. Just something to note, anyway, so, because, I mean, you can go through this and not really know what was in it before, or after, or between, right, so.
Point taken, thank you.
Any other discussion? Yep?
Under unmanned aerial vehicles, number 7, 7.1, it's prohibited to operate a drone or UAV unless permission has been obtained from the landowner before flying said drone or UAV, UAV over their property. The 7.2 says it is prohibited to operate a drone or UAV near an agricultural operation. Can the landowner operate a, their own personal UAV over their operation, or not? I think that's kind of...
Through the, through the Reeve to Councilor Slipcheck, it's actually a very interesting point you make. A private agricultural operation owner, I could see where they would have use for, for potentially doing that, maybe overflying a fence line or whatnot. So that's a good point that you make. And I think that maybe that section 7.2 doesn't fully address that. The only thing I would, I would, I guess anecdotally, well, not anecdotally, but it doesn't, it's not listed anywhere in here, is we do have, you know, a fairly significant airport nearby, military airport, as well as our own. So there are definitely some restrictions federally that have to do with, with flying around an airport. And there's definitely a lot of zones in this area that are prohibited from, from flying. So I guess any kind of an entry into, or any kind of an amendment to this particular section would have to require, or, or at least indicate, that if a homeowner has the occurrence to want to fly a drone over his or her property, that it would have to also be in accordance with whatever restrictions there are in the area. So that's, that's a good point that I can actually make an amendment to, and bring that before council, if that's council's wish.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilor Krevjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, I, I have a drone, and I took that federal license to be able to fly. And there's all kinds of rules and regulations there, so I'm, I'm able to fly the drone in my area. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, it was kind of the same point on drones. There's different definitions for different weights of drones. So a drone under a certain weight, you know, is, is kind of unrestricted, or whatever. So I guess we have to define that a bit clearer, the, the size of the drone and the category it fits into. I mean, that's because there's tons of kids that have small drones that are basically toys that they're not, you know, they're gonna be flying in their farmyard.
Okay, if there's- Okay, if there's any other discussion?
Through, excuse me, through the read to Counselor Swigert, the requirements and the restrictions on the type of drone, the licensing, the size, the weight, all of those things are found in the federal legislation. And so for that reason, because it's already legislated somewhere else, I did not include that in the, in our bylaw. I don't think it needs to be there if it's already in a federal piece of legislation, so that's why I didn't include it, but, you know, that can be discussed at council's pleasure as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that's carried. Onto nine point two point six.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve, I'm just working through a couple of screens here. On October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, council passed third reading of bylaw eighteen oh nine, emergency management bylaw, along with several ancillary documents, including a terms of reference document for the Emergency Advisory Committee. In that document, the terms of reference stated an error that the committee members would only serve a one-year term rather than a four-year term that would align this committee with municipal elections in Alberta. There are no restrictions concerning the terms of reference for this committee stipulated by the province, and administration is seeking council's approval to extend the term of committee members from one year for up to four years. This is an administrative process, it simply aligns a committee member term with municipal elections in Alberta, other committee terms are also being adjusted to accommodate this change. Furthermore, if council approves this change, it would be recommended that the motion passed at the October twenty-six, twenty-two organizational meeting, appointing Counselor Swigert and Deputy Reeve Fadé to this committee be amended to specify appointment term as being a three-year term, which would expire October twenty twenty-five. This amendment would align their appointment with the updated terms of reference for the committee. Appendix A is the Emergency Advisory Committee updated terms of reference, well, excuse me, the original terms of reference. And the recommendation is that council adopt the adversary Emergency Advisory Committee Terms of Reference as amended. And the council approves amending resolution number two-two point five four-two from the October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two organizational meeting regarding council appointments to various boards and committees by adding a three-year term to Emergency Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or looking for a motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve?
I'll make the first motion, option number one.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadé, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council adopts Emergency Advisory Committee Terms of Reference as amended. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Also looking for another motion? Yes, Counselor Slipchuck?
I'll make motion for number two.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchuck, on behalf of council, that council approves amending resolution number two-two point five four-two from the October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two organizational meeting regarding council appointments to various boards and committees by adding three-year term to Emergency Advisory Committee. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Onto planning, nine point three point one. And thank you for Mr. Vaspalco for saving the day with his computer.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I'm here today with members of our team from Planning and Community Services to present our third quarterly report. First off, I'd like to start off with our asset management section with a brief update. Overall, over this last quarter, we have continued to collect information, working with infrastructure, parks and recreation, mostly in acquiring all the data we can find on our building assets, historical information, financial information, et cetera. We've also conducted our Asset Management Initiative Project, which was a compassed training and education of our staff to reintroduce asset management across our management teams in all departments. We held two workshops in that regard in September. There is going to be a final implementation strategy being presented to council here in the next month to, for council's consideration, moving forward over the next few years on our, how we implement this new initiative. The second initiative that was completed this quarter was, we issued an RFP and awarded a contract to conduct five major building condition assessments in the MD. Mainly, we focused on our public, our public buildings that are open to the public administration building, our public works building, our public safety building, our Shaw House, and our ski chalet out at Kinisou. Obviously, we have other buildings open to public, but those are the major ones that are also quite substantial in value. So that report is also being reviewed currently with the department managers and the infrastructure department. Also, on the section regarding maps, forms, and miscellaneous, that is some of the tasks that were completed this last quarter by our GIS coordinator. She works quite often with many other departments, putting together maps, creating interactive platforms, which she's been doing a lot more of lately, which is very interesting because it helps, it helps with efficiencies between people that are out in the field, being able to actually directly input information into their phones or their iPads, and then feeding it back into the office. So there's some very interesting things going on there. Any questions on the asset management side? Good. Okay, with that, we will move on to planning and development, so I'll ask our manager, Lisa Foliate, to come up.
Almost looks like a cookbook thing. Nice little hose.
Good morning. When I did this report, there was no snow on the ground.
So our third quarter for planning and development, we had fifty-four... Sorry, we had fifty-four building permits issued in July, August, and September for just over six point three million, twenty building permits in July, twenty-seven in August, and seven in September. We had ten housing starts in the third quarter, which consisted of five single-family dwellings, single-family dwellings, one RTM, and four mobile homes. We issued one hundred and eighty-one safety codes permits in the third quarter, the majority album for the MD of Bonneville, with one issued for the Summer Village of Bonneville Beach. We had two new subdivision applications, one in August and one in September. We had one non-compliance received in the third quarter, and one previously reported non-compliance that was resolved with an approved permit. Some updates on our planning documents we're working on, our municipal development plan. With the conclusion of the Ardmore and Cherry Grove ASPs, we have now continued work on the municipal development plan. The MDP is being restructured to meet the direction of council's strategic priorities, and we're planning to start engagements with MD residents in December and continuing on into the new year. Our municipal lands and reserve bylaw, so we have been working on this bylaw to replace the existing bylaw fourteen fourteen, which received first reading on August twenty-fourth council meeting. The proposed new bylaw gives direction to administration on how to manage and maintain municipal lands, as well as guidance for compliance and enforcement. The amendments include a notification protocol, an updated fines schedule to align with the land use bylaw, so this bylaw is scheduled to come back to council for a second and third reading later on in this council meeting. Our inter-ministerial development plan, so administration has been working with ISL Engineering to provide a review and update of the IDP between the city of Cold Lake and the MD. The goal of the IDP is to promote a coordinated and collaborative approach to land use planning and growth management. Economic development and infrastructure development are a legislative requirement and also an opportunity to identify shared needs, common goals, and coordinate future action. An open house was held on the evening of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two in Cold Lake. The IDP is currently in consultation and engagement stage, and once complete, will be presented to council for first reading. Some area structure plan updates, both the Ardmore and Cherry Grove area structure plans are now complete, as they received second and third readings at the October twelfth council meeting, and Highway fifty-five and Moose Lake area structure plans. Administration is in the initial stages of research for these two ASP reviews. They are the next two area structure plans to be reviewed and updated as part of the three-year consulting contract with Urban Systems.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, just looking for a motion then? Or is there more? There is more.
Thank you.
Second mistake. Or third. I should have known better. Good morning.
Good morning, Reeve and council.
Thank you. I'm here today to provide a update on the Community Services Economic Development Report for July, August, and September. Over the past ninety days for lead generation, I have been in contact with Invest Alberta regarding cement plants. I've worked with the Alberta Hub regarding light industry requests. I've been involved with requests locally regarding value-added meat processing. I've been involved regionally with St. Paul and St. Paul County with regards to regional greenhouse network and energy distribution, and also been involved with the opportunity identification for sport recreation. Conferences I've attended included the, and of note are the Carbon Capture Canada Conference, and you'll see the notes here, the takeaways are that in order for this to succeed in our area, and specifically, I guess, in Alberta, there needs to be significant collaboration with regards to what are considered carbon hubs, and that the opportunity is not only around networks, but it's around the capture and utilization and storage, and utilization and storage provides an opportunity perhaps for some economic advantages with regards to reduced costs of energy, which would flow through to perhaps operating advantages around manufacturing. Carbon storage and utilization is a big part of decarbonization across various industry sectors. Those sectors being impacted the most or creating the most opportunities based on their current carbon outputs include the cement and concrete industries and the steel manufacturing industries. Currently, the industry and its partners are assessing options for cluster development, and some of the important parts that need to be discussed and identified and are currently being worked on are being competitive with other parts of the world, including the United States and Europe, when it comes to pricing for carbon credits and legal issues and accounting issues associated with the carbon credits. At the end of the day, the participants had identified that the next steps are to, for successor, to ensure that we stay focused on understanding that we as a country and as a province are currently ahead of the rest of the world when it comes to the technology, and we have to be able to find ways to scale up and take advantage of those economies of scale before other parts of the world catch up with us. It was, was a great meeting, and I look forward to, you know, working and understanding the industry more and having set up communications with their, the Pathways Alliance through their communications department, and certainly very appreciative of the press release that was made in October regarding the pathways plan for a project in our area that has a development value of sixteen billion dollars. Over the last ninety days, I've been involved in a number of meetings, regional sport tourism in Lac Le Biche, understanding the census data and being involved in census presentations, the Northeast Economic Development Roundtable, which was supported by both REAP and Jobs Innovation. They had presented to us with Atco, CNRL, and Northeast Energy and Pathways Alliance, and local realtors as well. Business Council of Alberta delivered a presentation to us with regards to the decade of prosperity and the vision for the next decade, and the commodity trends and labor shortage were things that were, were highlighted. You're, you're welcome to, to read the reports, I'm not going to go into any further details there. Over the last ninety days, I've been involved with agency outreach to ensure that we're in touch with as many opportunities for collaboration as possible. I had already mentioned that I'd been in contact with Alberta Hub and attended some of their meetings, also been involved with some research and other opportunities through Alberta Jobs Innovation and Economy, and participated in a number of workshops and sessions with Community Futures Lakeland, also involved with the Cold Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce, the Bonneville District Chamber of Commerce, Portage College, the local real estate agencies, and the REAP partnership. Current projects of note, working on the development of the Economic Development Microsite, and working on completing, which you've seen previously in the last several meetings, around the business and industry growth strategy. And that's my report, I would gladly entertain any questions.
Counsel, sorry, Deputy Reeve Fadé?
Good morning. Thanks, you're busy. In regards to lead generations, you're talking about general, sorry, regional greenhouse network and energy distribution. Can you kind of, give us a little more clarification on that and how that would work and, and what's going on there?
Sure. So it's, it's in its initial stages, and through, you know, obviously, being involved with other folks like at REAP and at the hub, I, I, you know, get exposed to different ideas that are happening in different communities, and so it came to my attention through another economic development professional that there is some, there have been some excess energy studies had done in our region and in St. Paul County through a energy firm that has operations in, in both areas, and they were willing to entertain a business case development with regards to utilizing excess energy for the development of greenhouses or vertical, vertical gardening. And so at this point in time, we've also included Community Futures and other federal and provincial organizations to identify opportunities for funding for this. So it's in its initial stage, and the hope is that, not to get it too far into the weeds, is that in, in January, there'll be an opportunity for us to solidify some funding, and then, if possible, move forward in the development of a business case, and then, of course, through the, the natural progression of, if it's successful, as we, as we go through our, our project management steps, there, there may be an opportunity, obviously, to, to identify private investors, investors to, to be involved in the process, which, which may include, obviously, local and national food retail chains.
Nice, awesome, yeah. I'm pretty excited to, to hear about that, you know, we're, encourage you to talk to Mr. Olin in regards to our biomass project we had, and this would fit really well in our region, and to bring it, to bring it here to the MD of Bonneville, so yeah, thank you for that.
You're awesome.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
Yep, next. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Reeve and council. So, together with Mr. Gilbo, we'll present the Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report. Starting off, just highlighting some of the main projects, a lot of these are substantially complete or near completion, so we're quite excited about knocking some of these off this list finally. But this is kind of where we are at for, for some of these. And then, we broke down some stats... And then we broke down some stats and stuff for the summer season for you, based on our campgrounds and parks, and then, of course, Kinnisou. Mr. Gilbo will go through kind of the park stuff, and then I'll highlight the...
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Yeah, I just, like Bowen said, most of these projects are fairly complete. I'll touch on a couple here that are at the early stages of not completed. The Angling Lake, just an update on that, waiting on the survey to come in, and then we can start our environmental approval applications on that. The Vezo Beach Boat Launch, basically, the contractor has taken that to a stage where he's built up the pad before the lake, the water's edge, and that'll be the pad, concrete pad, going in in the month of February. That's the schedule that we've received on that. Just a couple points on operations. I know it'll, may come up in the questions, is flooding rinks. As you know, this week is pretty mild temperatures, and we're not going to be able to do much there. We have started on Fort Kent, bit of a good start with that one, but when we're dealing with concrete pads, that's kind of goes against us a little bit with mild temperatures, as last year we started and lost our ace, so we kind of learned from that that we've got to be careful on our timelines and not jump in the gun. And cross-country ski trails, we did get enough snow to do some grooming and tracking there, so our skiers are happy and excited to be out there. We could use a little more snow. The conditions are not perfect, but they're at a point where they're usable anyways. Any questions?
Yes, Counsel, sorry.
Cross-country ski trails at Muriel Lake, is that the ones you're talking about? Trails at Muriel? Yes. Okay, thanks. I guess I would have questions. Are you talking about all the rest of them? I just wondered about the Kinnisou upgrades and how you think we're progressing with having Kinnisou kitchen and everything else ready for whatever.
Yes, through the reef, so they're coming along really nice at Kinnisou. So a lot of these, the chair, that's been inspected by ADERSA, and for the initial inspection on a new build, and the list was then handed off to, most of it was with Dopplermeyer to address. They've addressed all that. Dopplermeyer, or ADERSA, will be coming back, I believe, we're scheduled for around the fifth or sixth of December, where they'll certify all the chairs and carpets for us at that time. The renos are coming along, and they're looking great, so that's quite a nice change in there. And the adventure park, really, that's pretty much finalized. We're just working on a couple little details. We're still waiting on some things to be shipped from Germany, and then that'll be wrapped up. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go into, I guess, some of the stats for parks and recreation. Do you want to go through these?
Yeah, I can do that, sure.
I missed one little section here. Camping sites, I guess we touched on this in budget, there's five hundred and twenty camp sites that we have that are sitting on over eleven hundred acres. We have total nights booked over the season, we're sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine. The department does cut, split approximately two hundred and twenty-five cords of firewood or more. We've booked up to eleven thousand forty-six guests over the season. On our campground users, we had, outside the MD, we have around forty-six and three-quarter percent from outside, out of country, very small amount there. Out of province, around six percent from the MD itself, we're just under twenty. And Bonneville, Cold Lake, and like basically in the towns, communities there are around twenty-seven percent. Yeah, there's just a chart there for campground revenue for the season, just kind of showing you exactly which parks were successful, which ones were maybe not. Campgrounds with the biggest gains, Cold Lake Campground, showing around forty percent increase from two thousand and twenty-one. That's due to our expansion for sure there. Approximately a hundred thousand dollars over and above what we made in two thousand and twenty-one. Total campground revenue for the season was six hundred and one thousand, which was around, overall, was a six percent increase from two thousand and twenty-one, which is above our eight-year average, forty percent. Trails, we basically look maintain and groom, mow throughout the year, which is about thirty kilometers plus trails. Playgrounds, we look after over twenty playgrounds throughout the MD that are inner campgrounds, outsider campgrounds. And that is it. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll touch on Kinnisou, Adam. So for the first year for the adventure park, we've seen around sixty-eight thousand dollars from ticket sales, seeing around twenty-six hundred climbers actually go on the apparatus, and around eleven hundred walking passes, so usually parents going with their kids and watching from the ground for that. The restaurant did around fifty-one thousand in revenue, and we also won a number one People's Choice Award for our Canadian Smash Burger there for the two thousand and twenty-two Labor Week winner. And we sold around one thousand forty-three ice cream cones, so that was a big hit for lots of people coming out there. Going into culture and community givings, so this is all of the givings that the municipality provides to associations and groups within the municipality as well as groups within our urban neighbors. So with our community action grants, we've had around twenty applicants and have awarded over one hundred and twenty-one thousand plus dollars. With the Community Association Operating Grant to date, there have been seventeen applicants and over four hundred and seventy thousand dollars rewarded. The donations and sponsorship and recognition applicants saw around eighty-five applicants at the time of this report, and had awarded forty-three thousand for that. Council giving is, there was around thirteen applicants, and over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars had been given. To date, there had been over nine hundred thousand dollars given to support these groups within our municipality.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
And then, I guess, this, I'm the final report, so...
Mr. Reed, I did have one question.
You did? Okay.
It took me a while to find it in my notes. In regards to the adventure park, do we know how much of the use is from the MD versus, say, the town of Bonneville or this area of Cold Lake?
Through the reef, we're just trying to look at that data. Right now, it hasn't been correlated at the time of this report.
Any other questions? All right, then, I'll just be looking for a motion as for information here. Yep. Thank you, Counsel Cravieak, for making a motion. On behalf of Council, the Council accepts the Planning and Community Service Department two thousand and twenty-two Third Quarter Report as information. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Onto nine point three point two.
I apologize. So thank you, Reeve and Council, I'll try to be brief, as there are only minor differences from when you last saw this at first reading. So today, we are looking at Bylaw Number One Seven Six Six, the Municipal Land and Reserves Bylaw, which is being presented for second and third reading. This bylaw will repeal and replace the current municipal land and reserves bylaw, or Bylaw Number One Four Four Zero, which was adopted back in two thousand and nine. The intent of updating this bylaw is to provide the MD with the ability to properly enforce the management of land owned by the MD, and first reading for this bylaw was given back in August, on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. So the Municipal Land and Reserve Bylaw that is being proposed serves the long-term interest of the MD in a manner that is respectful of the MD's land and community goals. Topics covered in the Municipal Land and Reserves Bylaw include permission for activities on municipal land. This refers to the section that notes that although certain actions may not be allowed or prohibited under this bylaw, there are certain circumstances in which they might be allowed, either through a permit or license, a sign, if a sign is in place allowing that activity in the area, another bylaw permits the activity, or the person is an employee or authorized agent of the MD. There's also the notification protocol. This just provides information regarding how notification will occur and the associated timeline before action is taken. There's also enforcement, and notes the tools and methods of enforcement for offenses that occur, and the regulation of activities on municipal land, so it provides a list of all the prohibited actions and activities. So since first reading, there has been additional reviews of the Municipal Land and Reserves Bylaw. After careful consideration, administration proposes that the Municipal Land and Reserve Bylaw be amended by removing Section Five Point One L, which is under the Regulations of Activities on Municipal Land. It stated discharge any firearms, rockets, or other projectiles on municipal land, sorry. And also the removal of the corresponding section from Schedule A, which just notes that any offender of Five Point One L may be fined up to five hundred dollars. The affected sections would be reorganized sequentially, so that's why currently on the screen, Five Point L shouldn't read what I just noted, I apologize for that. So this amendment is being proposed in part due to regulations under the Municipal Government Act, so under Section Seventy-four of the MGA, a bylaw of a municipal district prohibiting in all or a part of the municipal district, the shooting or use of a firearm or other device that propels a projectile does not come into force until the bylaw has been approved by the Minister responsible for the Wildlife Act. So this requires any restriction of firearm to have prior ministerial approval. However, I would like to note, it is still unlawful to discharge firearms on privately-owned land. For example, under the Wildlife Act, it states that no person shall hunt any wildlife or discharge any firearm on or over occupied land, or enter on occupied land for the purpose of doing so without the consent of the owner or the occupant of the land. There are additional regulations throughout the Wildlife Act as well regarding discharge of a firearm near a building, I believe it was around forty, forty feet, and also the discharge of firearms near or across roads as well. So while many of the lands within the MD are open to the public, they are still considered private land, and thus the discharge of firearms is prohibited unless allowed or permission is received by the, from the MD under the Wildlife Act. So in conclusion here, under the, under the MGA, Five Point One is, would require the ministerial approval, and so it is being proposed that Bylaw Number One Seven Six Six be given second reading as amended with the removal of Five Point One L, and followed by third reading. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Yes, Counsel, correct?
Just for clarity, can you read what Five Point One L says? Because I'm not sure if I have the right copy of the bylaw here in front of me or not.
So I had the bylaw that I had attached there, I had already had it removed, that was an oversight on my part, but Five Point One L reads as discharge any firearms, rockets, or other projectiles on municipal land. And that was under the Regulations of Activities on Municipal Land, so the list, there are all the activities that were prohibited by this bylaw.
Okay. So now, currently then, with that amendment, L would read hunt or trap any animal on municipal land?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I do have a few questions about it, though. The environmental reserves, is that a provincial jurisdiction, like as far as enforcing? Because in this bylaw, environmental reserves and municipal reserves, when we say municipal land or municipal reserve, it encompasses environmental reserves, am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
So currently, is an environmental reserve the province's jurisdiction to enforce anything on there?
No. Environmental reserve is, comes under our control unless we do what's called an environmental reserve easement, which would leave the land under the landowners' control technically. Well, it's still ours, but it's just under their name, and so those are the two types of environmental reserve that really come into play here. Either way, when environmental reserve is taken through subdivision process, it's, it becomes our land, the MD's land.
And then, I think we talked about this when we did first reading, but it says to injure, deface, cut, so Five Point One E is no person shall injure, deface, cut, or remove any turf, tree, shrub, hedge, plant, or flower in any way on municipal land. And I know that, well, and then there's a penalty for that as well, a fine. I guess it sounds, I don't think we're going to be unreasonable, but it's still, we're putting it into writing that if somebody picks a dandelion by the edge of the lake, they can get a fine for it. So it's, I don't like to see that kind of stuff in writing necessarily.
And, sorry, just in response to that, if you guys would like to propose a recommended change in definition to that, we can do that here at this time as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure how to word it like that. It's...
Yeah, cool.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. On the flip side, that particular Five E also keeps somebody from cutting ten cords...
All the timber down.
Ten cords of woods down from MD land, so it's kind of a worst-case scenario. I think, I don't think we would run out and do anything with dandelion being pulled, but if somebody was cutting cords of wood, that gives us the authority to do something about it.
So Five, Five Point One L, the current, with the amendments now, it would say we're not allowed to hunt or trap any animal on municipal land either, which would include a beaver, as far as I know. The beaver can go and cut down the trees, though, so it's kind of, you can see how the trees can get taken down anyways if there's a beaver there, but we can't trap the beaver or the skunk, so I don't know.
Okay, you're just...
So...
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is just on municipal-owned land, correct?
That's correct.
So this is not, we're not talking about MRs or ERs that are adjacent to private properties, right? Or is it?
This would encompass all municipally-owned land.
So if we pass this bylaw, how are, you know, how are we going to enforce it, since we have a lot of MR and ERs out there, especially, you know, like around the lakes, where people do move trees, and they do move shrubberies and everything else, how, you know, how are we gonna enforce that is my concern.
Yep. Of course, there's going to be incidents of people removing, placing structures on it without our, without our knowledge, where we're unfortunately not able to encompass everything. For the most part, we are driven by a complaint-based process. So as people complain about things and as we find them, that's when we go out and do the enforcement if we, as we become aware of them. In higher traffic areas and such that are a little bit more maintained, it'll be work between ourselves and staff members to catch things where possible. But yeah, for the most part, it would be through complaint-driven process.
Okay, thanks.
And Mister Reed, I'd also point out that although we have a list of things you cannot do or should not do or must not do, Section 2 of the bylaw also indicates that there is a, there is a pathway for permission to do certain things if you'd like. For example, if we wanted to give, if somebody wanted to cut down a perfect Christmas tree that was on municipal land somewhere, they could approach the MD and ask for a permit under Section 2. And that may or may not be provided, but there is a pathway to permission for certain things.
That's where I think Counselor Crick is going. I think he might have seen a perfect Christmas tree, so he's too busy.
CEO, just for some clarity, so if I bought a home on a lake and there were some trees that were impeding my view of the lake and decided to, you know, to cut them down on ER and MR, is that going to be an issue?
So through the reef, to Deputy Reed Fadav, I would suggest that ER and MR having different rules, the ER would probably be denied because it is an environmental reserve. The MR, there may be, there may be a path to permission for that. If it's just municipally-owned land, it is neither MR or ER, the path is probably even easier. So there are three very distinct categories of land. It would be just municipal land that we just happen to own, municipal reserve that was taken as a part of a subdivision or for other reasons. And then environmental reserve that would have been taken as part of a subdivision. And each of them have a slightly different criteria.
Thank you.
And one other question. In 5.1I, it says that we cannot park, no one can park or operate any motorized vehicle or camper trailer on municipal land. Would that, so what about people that live on the lake and they have snowmobiles, they're driving through essentially an ER, which would be the strip of land between the lake and their lot, right? And then they're driving up onto their yard, for lake access, is that prohibited then under this bylaw?
If I may, so temporary parking and stuff will be allowed in general. We don't have any concerns with people driving through and then hopping off, taking some photos, doing whatever they might be looking to do. It's kind of the long-term placement of vehicles that we have concerns with. So if someone's leaving a trailer on municipal land or abandoning trucks or other vehicles on municipal land, that's where it kind of becomes a little bit more of a concern. And that's where we would start to look to provide some of the enforcement. Whereas on a temporary trip, usually not an issue. And then even if on kind of mid-scale, if there's people looking to temporarily park for a few days, there may be some discussion or approval for that. That's possible.
And then in here further on, too, it says that in Section 9.2, well, 9.1 and 2, it pretty much says that if somebody wants to do something on there, they'll have to have a minimum of $2 million of liability insurance?
Yes, so that's largely for structures and larger activities again. So if something is being maintained on our property, we need to ensure that should any damage or injuries occur as a result of that, that we are not being held liable for that. So the insurance is to help cover it with that.
So what would happen if we just didn't pass this bylaw?
If this bylaw is not passed, the current Municipal Land and Reserves Bylaw would just be maintain its effect. It's currently in place. This bylaw will repeal and replace that. So if it doesn't go through, the current one, Bylaw Number 1440, just is maintained.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion, please. Thank you, Counselor Subchik, for making a motion that Bylaw Number 1766, being a Bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, Number 87, to regulate the use and development of municipal lands and reserves, be given second reading as amended. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Looking for third reading.
I'll make the motion for third reading.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reed Fadav, for making the motion. On behalf of council, that Bylaw Number 1766 be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's also Carrie. All right, thank you. We're gonna take a lunch break now.